This is the Thursday, October fourteenth, two thousand and ten meeting of the Zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals. Will you call the roll, please?
Joanna Croft.
Hmm.
Timothy Vig.
Yeah.
Dean Carr.
Here.
Kenneth Burkhart. Jeff Roth.
Here.
Joshua Fink. Ann Denny.
Here.
Kate Williams.
Here.
Um, we have, Mr. Burkhart had indicated that he would be here, but have you heard anything further from him, Mr. Barrett? Okay. We have no minutes for approval. Special Order of Business disclosures. Are there any disclosures to announce?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the agenda, Item D, Consent Agenda Resolution for Approval. I'd like to abstain from voting on Items 1D through 1G. I was not in attendance at those meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Are there any other disclosures? Along that same line as Mr. Allen, I will be abstaining from Items H and I on item, on the Consent Agenda Resolutions for Approval. Those were cases from the September Board Meeting, and I was not in attendance, so I'll be abstaining from those two cases. Mr. Vig.
Mr. Chairman, I was absent from Item A, the Resolution two thousand and ten zero zero five case in February, and will be abstaining.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Ms. Williams.
I will also be abstaining from Item 1A, as I was not a member of the Board at that time.
Did you get all those? All right. Are there any other disclosures? Okay. Moving on to our consent agenda. We have before us one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine resolutions for approval on the consent agenda. Does anyone have an opportunity to review those? Does anyone have any items they'd like to pull from the consent agenda? Mr. Vig.
Well, I think Items B and C require a correction, and so if that means they need to be pulled, then I would ask that they be pulled.
Sure. Okay, so you want to make a motion to pull those from the consent agenda?
I move that we pull Items B and C from the consent agenda.
Okay. All right. Sorry, I guess I stand corrected. Mr. Vig, it does not require a motion, but we will pull those two from the consent agenda. Are there any other items wishing to be pulled from the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there any opposition to approval of the consent agenda with? Do we need to? Yeah, that was my. With the exception of the disclosures and the abstentions noted, is there any objection to approval of the consent agenda items, excepting Items B and C? Seeing none of those, the consent agenda is approved. Mr. Vig, would you care to? Would you care to speak? Would you like to speak to those two resolutions separately, or how would you like to?
I can do them together. I believe in the description of the public hearing date, it lists July seventh, but the other resolutions cited a date of July eighth, and I checked my records, and I believe that the date that we actually met was July eighth, so the B and C where it says July seventh is, I believe, incorrect.
So on Items B and C, Resolutions two thousand and ten oh one nine and two thousand and ten oh two two, change both of those to reflect a meeting, a hearing date of July eighth.
That's correct.
Okay. Do you have any other comments, Mr. Vig? Okay. Is there any opposition to those two changes? Seeing none, those two items are changed, and those resolutions are approved. That moves us on. We have no appearance requests. Item E on our agenda, Item F, unfinished business public hearings. We have no unfinished business regular agenda. We have no items on our regular agenda, and that moves us on to our public hearings. Before we go through our, we hear our first case, I would like to read the Order of Business for variance hearings. The Chair shall introduce the variance and explain the procedure to be followed. The variance case number and the name of the applicant shall be read into the record. The Board shall hear and rule on any objections to the sufficiency of notice. The Board shall hear a brief staff presentation outlining the variance, not to exceed ten minutes. On conclusion of the staff presentation, the Board members and the applicant may then direct questions to the staff through the Chair. The applicant shall give his/her presentation, not to exceed ten minutes. Throughout the proceedings, the burden of proof rests upon the applicant, who must convince the Board by a preponderance of the evidence that the variance should be granted. On the conclusion of the applicant's presentation, the Board members and the staff may then direct questions to the applicant through the Chair. The hearing shall then be open for public testimony. Each person has three minutes. All persons who testify may be questioned by the Board, staff, or the applicant. On conclusion of the public testimony, the staff, followed by the applicant, shall have the right of rebuttal, three minutes each. The Board shall proceed to develop oral findings and conclusions with regard to the variance and disposition of the variance. The staff shall reduce the oral findings and conclusions to writing for subsequent adoption by the Board at a later meeting. The matter then rests with the Board, and the Chair asks for a positive motion from the Board. Our, just for all those in attendance tonight, the, in order for a variance to pass, it must receive majority of, majority of the, a majority of the fully constituted Board, we're a nine-member Board, so even though there are six of us in attendance this evening, the variances must pass by a vote of, with five votes in favor of the variance. With that, that brings us to our first case, two thousand and ten one zero seven is the case number. The petitioner, Tommy and Barbara Robertson, are the petitioners here. They've indicated they're in attendance. Could staff provide us with the sufficiency of notice, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I mention the specifics, did we announce last month that public notice now consists of the website and the mailed public hearing notices? We no longer do newspaper or magazine ads?
I was not in attendance.
It's just an informational item. If anyone should mention or be upset that they didn't see a newspaper or magazine ad, it's because the Assembly back in January changed the rules, and they became effective at the beginning of September, so it's.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One hundred and nine public hearing notices were mailed for this. The property was posted. We did not receive any written responses to the public hearing notices. However, the applicants, as part of their application, submitted a petition of support from many of the nearby neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Will you proceed with your presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a variance request to allow an existing carport to encroach into the required twenty-foot front yard setback by approximately fourteen and a half feet, or in other words, have a setback from the property line of approximately five and one-half feet. On page three of the package is the most recent as-built we have, and on page four of the packet is the oldest as-built we could find for the property. It's not dated. I just handwrote it, and it's from nineteen seventy-seven. We've been unable to locate any actual building permit files for this property. The only true permit application we have in the system is an after-the-fact twon, two thousand and ten permit, current permit, for the carport, which is the subject of the variance tonight. The applicant has stated that when he came in prior to constructing the carport, he asked the municipality for information regarding carport construction, but no information was provided. The applicant then built the carport and was informed this year that a permit is required. Structural, code abatement, structural is the one who happened to notice that the garage did not have a permit. The lot is a level, standard-sized, and shaped rectangle typical for the subdivision and the neighborhood. We're not aware of any physical defects to the property, but the applicant has reported wet soils and poor drainage in the rear of the property, which has resulted in the house being moved forward on the lot. The house is approximately twenty-six feet from the front yard lot line. If you refer to one of the areas in the package, you'll see that this is a fairly typical setup for these homes. They all seem to be placed fairly forward on the lot. This lack of a large setback may indicate a lack of planning for large garages to come in the future. However, when the subdivision was developed, most, if not all, of the homes came with a one-car-width driveway and a parking garage, or, excuse me, a parking pad or an attached garage or carport, all of which appear to have met the setbacks from, from the ones we can identify. This subject property came with a driveway and a parking pad. In nineteen seventy-five, the current owners applied for and obtained a permit for a carport. They built a garage instead, however, the garage met all the setbacks and did pass building inspections, so no enforcement action was taken. Many of the homes through this, through this area still have just a one-car driveway and either no garage or no carport, or a carport or a garage. There are several photos within the, in the package as well. Many of these properties appear to be in violation. Some appear to be in violation but are not. Many of the properties have variances for either front or side yard encroachments, although we didn't find any variances for greater than a ten-foot encroachment, and there are also several legally non-conforming encroachments which predate zoning regulations which were adopted in nineteen seventy-one. So again, this is a request to encroach the front yard, twenty-foot setback by approximately fourteen and one-half feet. To the findings, standard one, that there exist exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstances, the standard is not substantially met. We cannot reasonably relate the variance need to slope, lot shape easements, or other physical impediments. The lot was platted, and the original house was built before the zoning regulations were adopted, however. The house originally had a one-car-wide driveway and a parking pad, which is typical of the subdivision. Standard two, because of the physical circumstances, a stripped application would create an undue or exceptional hardship. The standard is not substantially met. Homes throughout the neighborhood generally have a very similar setup, a parking pad and a garage or a carport. This house has both a garage and a carport. Standard three, the hardship is not self-imposed. The standard is not substantially met. That is partially because we were unable to find any physical conditions to the property related to the need for the variance, and also because the need does appear to be a result of the actions of the applicant. The applicants did not obtain a permit prior to construction of the carport. Standard four, the variance, if granted, will not adversely affect the use of adjacent property. The standard is partially met. There are no structure violations. Drainage and runoff do not appear to be an issue. However, the car, the carport is only five and one-half feet from the edge of the right-of-way, although I would point out, you will see in the photos, the right-of-way is far from fully developed. Total right-of-way width for the street is approximately sixty feet. The currently constructed street is about thirty feet, and it is approximately in the middle of the right-of-way, so in the unlikely event that the street were ever to be fully developed to sixty feet, properties on both sides of the street would lose about fifteen feet to additional right-of-way. There is a chain-link fence that appears to be in the right-of-way. The applicants will have to address that separately. There have been no objections from the neighborhood. Standard five, that the variance, if granted, is in keeping with the intent of the code, the standard is substantially met. This is a standard dimensional request. Standard six, the variance, if granted, does not adversely affect the health, safety, welfare of the wider area of the municipality of Anchorage. Again, the standard is partially met. As in standard four, there are some issues which are not, not a concern, however, because the carport would only be five and one-half feet from the edge of the right-of-way, there are potential future safety issues. And standard seven, the variance, if granted, is the minimum variance to make possible a reasonable use of the property. The standard is not substantially met. The house was built in nineteen seventy-one, approximately, with a driveway and a parking area on the west side. In nineteen seventy-five, the owners obtained a permit for a carport on the west side of the house, but built a garage and not a carport. The carports, excuse me, the garage at that time otherwise met code in terms of setbacks. The applicants added the current carport, the subject of this variance, in two thousand and nine. The house with a garage, built in nineteen seventy-five, was at parity with the neighborhood, and a second sheltered parking area with a seventy-three percent encroachment cannot be considered the minimum necessary variance to allow a reasonable use of the property. The Department has to recommend denial because standards one, two, three, and seven are not substantially met. If the Board does find for the variance, there are six questions on pages nine and ten of the Department report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Are there any questions of staff by the Board? Mr. Vig.
Mr. Barrett, when you were speaking to standard six and four about the development of the, of the right-of-way width, you, you referred to the safety issues as potential safety issues in the future? Is that correct? Just want to make sure that I understand if the, safety issues are possible in the future but don't exist necessarily today?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Vig, correct. I believe the full extent of what I said, potential future if the full width of the right-of-way were ever to be developed. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Croft.
Thank you. Mr. Barrett, you addressed in your, in your report the driveway separation issue that, that traffic was concerned about. I was wondering if, and I believe that there is no variance for, for that driveway separation, according to, to your report. If, if this variance were to be granted, what happens to this violation on driveway separation?
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Croft, that's correct. There's no variance for driveway separation, no waiver, and the total driveway width would require a variance from the plating board. What the applicants would have to do, if this variance is approved, is narrow up the two driveways to perhaps one car width each, and then hopefully obtain the minimum separation distance between the two driveways. So in, instead of having approximately, on the west, on the west side of the property, instead of having an asphalted area about twenty feet wide, they'd have to reduce it to ten, nine even perhaps, and on the east side of the property, instead of an asphalted area at the property line of twenty feet width, reduce that down to ten feet, so adding about forty feet between the driveways is theoretically possible. It's overkill, they don't need that much. But yes, I'm sorry, short answer to your question, they could narrow each driveway at the property line to a single car width, and then flare the driveways out once they're approximately ten or so feet up onto the property to give them the adequate access they need for the garage and the carport.
Okay, so it would be physically possible to meet that requirement?
It appears so.
If this is the case. All right, and then the other question we had is, you, in the discussion about the neighborhood, it was shown that there are, there are other properties that have similar configurations with the carport in front, and some had variances, and others seem to be in violation. Do you know if those, if those properties also had problems with driveway separation, or not?
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Croft, in, in walking through the neighborhood, I only walked the, the street in which the Robertsons are on and two others. I did not notice any overt driveway violations. Mr. and Mrs. Robinson's is fairly obvious, because the two driveways are set off by the garage and the carport. You really couldn't help but notice it as you walked by. Others might have a driveway width issue, but it's all on one side of the property, and it's not as obvious, and I didn't measure them, so I cannot say categorically, but it did not appear to be a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Getting back to that driveway issue, Mr. Barrett, do you happen to know if in the front of the subject property is the carbon gutter a rolled section, or is it standard upright curb with curb cuts for driveways?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vig, as I recall, and I see Mr. Robertson saying the same thing, it's rolled. Some of the pictures that were submitted of neighboring properties indicated an upright curb, so I just wanted to make sure about that. Okay, thank you.
Are there, are there any other comments at the Board? Mr. Barrett, I, I do have a, one question. I'm looking at the aerial photo. It appears that on the, at least on the south side of Forty-seventh Avenue, west of Van Buren, the front yard, the, the setback of pretty much all the buildings on that aerial are, are pretty much uniform, as, as far as you could probably draw a straight line across them all. I couldn't tell from the shadow, however, how many of those have, have carports. Based on your, your, you know, walking of the area, can you give a, an indication of percentage or, or number of the lots that have carports on that south side of Forty-seventh?
Mr. Chairman, I would have to say it's common. Mr. and Mrs. Robinson are not alone in the boat here. Is that acceptable answer?
That's good enough. Thanks for being so precise. Are there any other questions? If not, could the applicant come forward, please? Could you state and spell your name for the record?
Barbara Robertson. Do you want both names spelled?
Yes, please. Thank you, Ms. Robertson. You have ten minutes for your presentation, and we must find that all seven standards are, are met in order to grant the variance, so if your presentation could, could address the seven standards, please.
Okay. Some of this will sound redundant, from what Al just said, but I want you to know that my husband and I consider ourselves to be good, intelligent, law-abiding citizens, and we do not break laws, rules, or regulations intentionally. We were, however, somewhat ignorant. We got in permits and Muni regs concerning building a carport. We accepted the information given to us by the attendant at the information desk as being true. Apparently, we should have investigated further, but since she was hired by the Muni, we thought she was highly qualified to be working in such a position. Since we have been informed of those regulations, the building in the back of the yard has been moved away from the fence, and is now five foot six inches from the fence. The trash container in question is movable, but it does match the house, and it contains three trash cans, and the reason we built it, because loose dogs in the neighborhood would come by and tear up the trash, and we know what that looks like in the neighborhood. We wanted to prevent it. The carport was built to serve as a safe area to get in and out of vehicles, and to protect us from the harsh winter elements, especially since we are now both senior citizens. Now, do I go on to number one?
However you'd like to address it.
Okay. I have one correction on Al's. We purchased our house in nineteen sixty-nine. The first or second owners on that block, there were only eight homes built. The entire neighborhood was small, and it was extremely wet. The builder, that is why he built them on the land, both yards go down, so, I mean, the front and the back, so to provide drainage. The street was so bad and wet, the U.S. Postal Service refused to deliver mail until we actually had a road. And in the backyard, we still get a lake every spring. That is how wet the area is. On to number two. Our asset, carports and garages are very common in our neighborhood, and we have seen several that really do appear at yard setback, and I've attached the photos. We have many more photos. I selected the best eight. Since there are already several of these built, we never anticipated a problem. As to number three, as prior, and prior we mentioned, my husband did attempt to get everything needed from the permit office to build the carport, but he was informed by the female tenant, there were no regulations for carports, only for garages. Being the ordinary citizen, who is not savvy on all the rules and regulations that the municipality has, we assumed the attendant was knowledgeable and took her word, but nothing was needed. We did not know at the time that we should have gotten her name, date, and other identifying information. We will not make that mistake again. None of our neighbors have, this is number four, I'm sorry. None of our neighbors have objected to our carport. We've talked to many of them, and when asked, they say it looks quite nice, does not look like an add-on, and is far superior to several carport codes we've seen in the neighborhood. And I have attached the photos, so you can see for yourself. There's also a photo where the neighbor signed next to it, that they had no objections, and I don't think any are here tonight, and, and they were actually surprised to know that there was a problem with the carport. When they got their notice in the mail, they thought they had done something wrong. So we cleared that out. Number five, like I said, the carport's not an eyesore, and it was pleasant to look at it, and it improves the neighborhood. There are many large structures in the area, several then also appear to encroach beyond their five feet from the front of the house. Our intent is not to get anyone else in trouble. Yes, we made a goof. Safety's a big issue for myself, since I'm permanently handicapped. The carport provides ice-free, air-free footing for getting in and out of vehicles without fear of getting injured. My husband, I'm sorry, number seven, my husband does most of our driving, so we usually get the carport, use the carport for our transportation. The garage is a very- The garage is a very tight fit. When you pull into the garage, you can open the door just enough to squeeze out. Any passengers that you have have to get out of the car prior to pulling the car in the garage. Sometimes that's a very icy situation because you have the eaves that hang over, and the ice drips off, and creates these little mans on the driveway. Um, there's not much more space in the carport for opening all car doors. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Roberson. Are there any questions of the applicant by the board? Ms. Croft?
Hi, Ms. Robinson, Robinson, sorry. Um, you heard a discussion about the driveway separation. Um, if this variance is granted, what are you intend to do about this?
That's exactly what we intended to do. Narrow them up to regulation, and then as you get past that little property line.
Could you speak into the microphone, please, Ms. Roberson? Could you speak into the microphone so we can?
I'm sorry.
Record, thank you.
Let me do it again. We had already talked to Al what we could do, and like he said, we could narrow the entrance of the driveways, and then, and then we get to, I forget what it's called. The property line area, we could let it be wide again. It would not be a problem.
Okay, good, thank you.
Are there any questions, um, of the applicant by the board? Mr. Vega?
I'm sorry, I should have asked, maybe asked Mr. Barrett this, but I didn't realize until just now, as you were going through your presentation, that, um, I see your responses to standards one through five, but I don't seem to have in my packet the responses to six and seven. Were they completed? Did you, did you prepare a response to those?
Yes. I went through one through seven?
Yeah, I, I didn't get a copy of them, I, to read, and, and I didn't realize it until just now.
Would you like to see a copy?
I'm, I'm, we're asking Mr. Barrett here to see if he's.
Okay.
I didn't get one either, Mr. Chairman. But I'm sure it's there. I remember looking at the application. Well, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if it was eaten by the copier or not, but it's not in the folder, it's not with the original application. But I know, in speaking with the Robertsons, we went over all of these. I see what's happened in the original copy, in the original application, downloadable version from the website. It's, uh, six and seven are on the top of the back page, and when they were copied, they were missed. That's all, but they, they have been answered. I could read the answers into the record if you like, or pass them around. If Mr. Barrett is willing to read them, I, I would be satisfied with that.
Um, yes, um, Mr. Barrett, would you read those into the record, please?
Thank you. Um, standard six, the variance, if granted, does not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the municipality of Anchorage. Quote, "My husband and myself are both senior citizens, and the carport provides safety from our harsh winter elements. I have a permanent disabled license plate and placard. Safety is a big issue for me." Big is underlined. Standard seven, variance granted is the minimum variance that will make possible a reasonable use of the land. Quote, "Because of the house being already set, any building on front would encroach. We have a one-car garage, so the safety issue comes into play again with the winter elements." Thank you.
Mr. Vega, does that, uh, answer your question, or address your concern?
Thank you.
Are there any other, um, questions of the applicant by the board? Are there any, uh, questions of staff of the applicant? Sorry? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Mr. Vega, I missed.
That's okay, I had one more question for the applicant. And bear with me, I don't mean to, mean this to sound disrespectful, but, uh, in reading your, your application and the summary, uh, it, if I've got my facts straight, you, you got a permit for the carport in nineteen seventy-five? And that was actually constructed as a garage?
Actually, a relative did that for us.
Pardon me?
Uh, excuse me, a relative took care of that for us.
Okay.
So I don't remember anything about that. That was a million years ago.
That was, I was wondering about, that, at that time, there was a recognition a permit was needed, and why that wasn't happened?
Because it was a garage. And as, as far as I knew, that's what they had gotten, a garage permit.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions of the applicant? Seeing none, um, if you have a seat, we'll have a public hearing, open it for public hearing. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify? Anyone at all? Seeing no one, the public hearing is closed. Does staff have any rebuttal?
No, thank you.
Does the applicant have any rebuttal you'd like to, anything else you'd like to add? She's indicated that she has no, no rebuttal. With that, the matter rests with the board. Could I have a positive motion from a board member, please?
Actually, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Did we run out of time to ask staff additional questions? Did I just miss my opportunity?
Go ahead and ask, Ms. Croft.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Barrett, I was wondering if you knew of any, um, evidence that this area was swampy at one time, that there have been any drainage issues in this neighborhood?
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Croft, I'm personally unaware of any project management and engineering did not report anything, but of course, the homes were built forty years ago, so we're in an entirely different world now with streets, curves, gutters, and so forth. Sorry.
Thank you.
Um, again, could I have a positive motion from a board member, please? Yes, Mr. Ron.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. In case number two thousand ten dash one zero seven, I move to grant a variance from AMC twenty-one point four zero point zero three zero to allow an existing carport to encroach the required front yard setback by approximately fourteen point five feet, and have a setback five point five feet instead of the required twenty feet. Subject to Department of Recommendations. Numbers one through six on pages nine and ten of the staff packet.
Thank you, Mr. Ron. Ms. Croft, you've indicated you would second that motion?
I would, but I believe that, uh, condition six, um, would not apply if the variance were granted. And so I would like to offer an amendment that number six not be included.
I'll concur with that.
Thank you, Ms. Croft. Uh, Mr. Ron, will you speak to your motion, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Start by saying I don't know quite whether or not I'm going to support the motion at hand and look forward to board discussion that will hopefully follow. In working through the seven standards, of course, um, standard one at issue is the potential for, um, wetness and that, um, affecting the placement of the house on the lot. Just based on general knowledge, this part of town is most likely wet, um, and don't find, however, that wetness to be unique to this property, um, especially in, in comparison of this property to the greater, um, local area that's, that it's found in. So I, I would have difficulty finding definitely that this standard is substantially met, but maybe, uh, based on some additional board comments, could see that it might be partially met. In seeing that the only potential for, um, physical circumstances carrying into standard number two is this issue of water, I also can't see that standard number two would be substantially met. Again, it, it looks like many of the houses are located close to the street, um, and that's definitely not, not a unique characteristic of, of the lot in question. Regarding standard three, um, based on board member questions, comments, and responses from the petitioner, um, there appears to have been some knowledge for permit requirements in the seventies. Regardless of, uh, municipal employee's response a few years ago, uh, it, it is the landowner's responsibility, as they've indicated, um, to, to meet all, um, code requirements. In that sense, I, I see that the construction of this carport is, is self-imposed. Agree with staff in that standard four, um, may be partially met. I'd, I'd like to discuss more with board, the board, especially Mr. Vega and his question about safety, um, current versus future issues there. Agree with staff in standard number five, finding that it's met, that this is indeed a dimensional variance and not, not a use variance request. Regarding six, standard number six, the petitioner's, um, personal circumstances have been noted, but in greater relation to, um, the health, safety, and welfare of, of the general public, um, I find that the standard is, is at least partially met, of course, pending the safety issue discussion, um, that will follow. Standard seven, although the board hasn't historically looked at, this is a, a defining threshold level standard. In concert with my difficulty in finding that the other standards may or may not be met, um, would like to discuss this briefly. My house has a garage. A reasonable use of the land is, is reflected by the fact that the house has a garage. The addition of the carport, um, is, to me, in excess of, um, that reasonable use idea, and, um, eliminates the, the parity that this landowner has in comparison with, with its neighbors. That's my initial interpretation of the seven standards, and I look forward to board discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Ron. And Ms. Croft?
Um, yeah, I, I'll address my thoughts on, on standard number one. I do think that there, the fact that the houses are pulled up so relatively close to the street does indicate that there might have been problems in the rear of the, the yards down the center, so they were trying to, to deal with drainage issues. So I do see that that is a, that is a possible, um, a possible partial, um, meeting of, of standard number one. I, I do think that also, um, there is a garage that is attached to this, but if you look at the as-built, depending on whether you're looking at the nineteen seventy-seven or the nineteen, uh, the two thousand and ten one, it's either shown as eight foot eight wide or ten feet wide, which can be, given, you know, sizes of walls and things like that, can be a very small garage. And, um, and the applicant did state that, that anyone, any passenger does have to get out of the car outside of the garage, and that doesn't quite provide the same, um, the same benefit that a regular-sized garage, not an oversized garage, but even a regular-sized garage, might provide. So in that case, the, the location of this particular house on this particular piece of property, side to side, and then the subsequent addition of a very small garage, does seem like it, it might be, um, unusual. I don't know the width of the other garages that are, not the carports, but the garages that are part, part of the house. I don't know what those widths are, but I do believe this garage that does exist, um, is probably not meeting what we would consider to be a, a standard for, um, a parity, at least with people in Anchorage and, and having a, a garage there. So I, I saw that as, um, at least possibly meeting, um, the, the, um, standard number one, and then also standard number two, um, about the fact that, that, um, because of the physical characteristics, there is not a protected, um, protected driveway or protected, enclosure that would let them meet, um, have a reasonable use of their land for getting in and out of, of their car in a protected environment. It does bother me that this is five feet closer to the front property line than any other property that's gotten a variance at this point. I don't know, it's only twenty feet long, I don't know how it could have been much shorter and still have met the length of a car. Uh, it doesn't look to be unusually, you know, much longer than the car that's in the pictures. So in that sense, I, I don't know how you, if you'd shorten it up by a foot or two, it still wouldn't get you back to the ten feet of other, um, of other adjacent property owners there. Um, the, you know, the issue about the driveway separation does bother me, but I do believe if, if they can make that distance work, um, for having driveway separation, then I think the potential safety issues that belong with that, um, would, um, would be going away. So in that sense, I think that strengthens, um, the standard number four, that it might be, um, more than partially met by the fact that, I, because I see that as a, a danger that's now, not a possible one in the right-of-way development issue in the future. So I do see, that was a concern of mine, and that does seem to be, um, as if that could be, could be met. So I, I guess because of those issues, um, I do see that the standards one and two might be partially met, and I believe that four, um, is at least, uh, partially, partially met. And I would be interested to hear other, uh, comments from other board members.
Thank you, Ms. Croft. Are there any other comments from board members? I, I'll weigh in while, um, the other board members, I'm sure, are collecting their thoughts to, uh, to add to this discussion. This is, and this is a, a tough case, um, I, I believe, for, for all of, of us, um, and I guess I'll, I'll start my, my, um, discussion on, um, you know, we, we often, as a board, see cases that come in before the fact or after the fact. This is an after-the-fact variance, and I try not to, um, slant my opinion one way or another. While the petitioner said that you've, uh, you went in and saw or spoke to municipal staff and expected them to be the experts, that's not necessarily the case. The burden does rest with the petitioner and with the property owner to make sure that, that you're abiding by all the, the rules and regulations. That being said, um, I also look at a couple of thoughts that, that I have, and Ms. Croft, you, you touched on them as well, regarding, um, standards one and two, was, as I look at the aerial, um, all the fronts of the, the homes appear to have the same setback, which assuming it's twenty-two feet, let's say, per, per this as-built, any, um, any carport is going to require, uh, a variance of some kind, and it sounds like there have been a number of either, um, variances granted or non-conforming determinations made. So you also touched on the, uh, carport depth being not overly, um, excessive, you know, if they're going to build a carport for use, does this appear to be adequate or minimum? And I think, I think so. The, the house was built in nineteen sixty-nine, which, um, is prior to, uh, area-wide zoning in nineteen seventy-one, and I, I wrestle with this quite often, where the zoning regulations weren't in, in place, and the standard at the time, you know, it appears that all these houses were built the same. Well, we've discussed, arctic entries are, um, a part of living, you know, living in Anchorage, and we've and we've seen those come before us. The carports are also used. The width of that existing carport, the picture on, you know, page 14, which shows the, it appears it was the carport that was eventually enclosed, so where you typically have a useful single-car garage, you have a seven-foot door, let's say, and have a foot and a half or two feet on either side, it doesn't even appear that there's that. So I, we've heard testimony from the applicant that you can't get in and out of that, that single-car garage, and I concur that the usefulness of that single-car garage is in question in my mind. So for those reasons, I'm leaning towards supporting this motion, and I'll address the standards. As I mentioned, I find that the timing of the construction of the original house and its original footprint didn't offer opportunity to provide a, I guess what I'd call, an adequate or minimum carport adjacent to the house, so the only location that they could go is forward. And so with that, I do feel that the timing of the zoning, the location of the houses are exceptional circumstances of the property. And again, I think that addresses standard number two as well, that even though there already was a carport, or there is a carport there, it was not usable, functional as a I do find, you know, standard three is always the one we struggle with, that it is self-imposed. However, I think if you look at the placement of the house and the timing, if you walk through the, again, the timing of the zoning and how things have evolved with regard to construction practices and Anchorage in a winter city, that the hardship is not necessarily self-imposed. So I can lean towards supporting that, but again, I would appreciate hearing from other board members. Standard four, I believe that that is met. Standard five is met. Standard six, the, as staff has indicated, the adjacent road is about, it sounds like the back of the curb is about 15 feet from the, from the edge of the property line. So while we are talking about a five-and-a-half-foot separation of, from the existing carport to the right-of-way line, the distance to the, the road is probably closer to 20 feet. And looking at the development, there is curb and gutter. I wouldn't anticipate the road getting any wider. There may be a sidewalk added at some future time, but that would be the addition of another five feet. And knowing what I know about trying to get sidewalks in existing subdivisions, it's not an easy thing to have happen, even though I think we all agree they're a good idea. Everybody wants them on the other side of the street. So, and then lastly, I believe standard seven, so I do think standard six, find that it's met. Standard seven, I think that this is a minimum variance for, for a possible reasonable use of the land, with that being a house with a functional carport. So I'd definitely be interested in hearing other board member comments, specifically regarding standard number three. Are there any other comments? Mr. Viggen?
Well, with respect to standard number three, like, the fact that in 1975, a permit was taken out for a carport on the west side, but then constructed as a garage, I guess I'm concerned about that because I, I think had it remained a carport, it probably could have functioned with adequate room to, for ingress and egress from the vehicle, because when it was enclosed and a wall built, then it made it much more difficult. So in looking at the pictures, there are a preponderance of carports, so it, it wouldn't be out of place for the neighborhood for this to have remained a carport rather than a garage, and I think it could have been functional that way. And so now that we have a carport in addition to the garage, I, I think that the actions that were taken in that earlier construction limited their ability to make it functional, but it could have been at parity with the neighborhood, I believe. I agree with you, Mr. Cars, about the likelihood of the street being widened is probably pretty small, and 48th Avenue there doesn't really connect many traffic generators, and it wouldn't, from a traffic standpoint, have a need to be widened much, if ever. So I'm probably not too concerned about the safety aspects of it, depending on the height of that wall adjacent to this new carport, as long as it's able to be seen over that wall, I think it probably, from a safety standpoint, could be, could be okay. So I'm having a problem with standard number three, and in particular, number seven, that there would have been room for a carport on the west side of the house, which I think could have been done within the setbacks, in effect, and been at parity with the neighborhood. And to me, that would have been the minimum, the minimum variance, or there would not have even needed to be a variance at that point. So I, it sounds like we're all kind of struggling with this one, but I'm really kind of focused on number seven and, and number three as well.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Are there any other comments from board members? I'm sorry, do you keep trying to hit the button tonight? Oh, okay. Ms. Denny, please, sorry, I didn't realize that. Ms. Denny?
I agree with Mr. Cars in the placement of the house is probably substantially to blame for not having any front yard for a suitable garage or a carport. And Mr. Vig, it looks like even if they had built a carport on the left side of the house, or the right side of the house, it would probably still have the same footprint as the garage and still be limited in usefulness. And I'm also concerned with the safety of the occupants, as Mrs. Robinson has stated that she is disabled, and having a little bit more peace of mind in having better footing in the inclement weather and having a little bit more cover. I think that's, that's what's weighing on my mind mostly, and I do intend to support the petition.
Thank you, Ms. Denny. Are there any further comments from the board members? Mr. Wong?
Thank you, Mr. Wong. Thanks to my fellow board members for the discussion thus far. I was hoping that would happen, and it has. So it sounds, at least from my perspective, the discussion effort thus far has enabled me to see that standards one and two are at least partially met. And if indeed that's the case, I can carry the fact that standard three would be met for the same reasoning, in that the wetness of a lot had some effect on the placement of the house, which in turn limited the ability to create something in front of the house. It's not our job as the board to find remedy for the landowners. There may be some alternatives, if in fact that garage was built as a carport and then just enclosed, something like locking out the back wall and going through into the backyard. But that's a side issue. Getting back to my earlier point, in that I can now find standards one and two partially met, and three at least partially met for the same reason, in that the hardship is not the carport itself. As has been discussed, any carport in front of the house would require a variance request, but the hardship is related to the condition of the land and placement of the house and resultant effects. And for those reasons, can find that standard three is at least partially met, if not met. For those reasons, I've made my decision, and pending any amazing revelation in future discussion, intend to support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Wong. Is there any further discussion? If not, please vote. Okay. That motion passes with a vote of six to zero. I would like to read that every final decision of the board shall clearly state on its face it is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case, and that the parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to the Superior Court. Brings us to our next case this evening, which is case 2010-117. The petitioner is Joel Wagner, is the petitioner here. He's indicated he's present. Could we have staff's presentation, or provide us with the sufficiency of notice, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This case was advertised with, on the municipal website. The property has been posted. Thirty-one public hearing notices were sent on September 17th, and to date, one has been returned requesting additional information. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you provide us with your presentation, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This case, the request for a variance from Anchorage Municipal Code 2140-115 to allow an existing staircase and roof landing to encroach 13.1 feet into the required 25-foot side yard stepback. This property is legally described as Hundred Hills, First Edition, Block Five, Lot 11. It is generally located on Wolf Drive, near the south end of Highland Road in Eagle River. It is, it is owned R-10 with special limitations. The limitations in this zoning district require a minimum lot size of one and a quarter acres and restrict residential structures to single-family. Anchorage Municipal Code 2115-010B requires that seven standards be substantially met for a variance to be granted. I would like to address each standard individually. Standard number one, staff finds that this standard has been met. This lot is located within the moderate hazard avalanche zone. Avalanche map may be found on page five of your staff packet. The property is severely sloped with downsloping contours ranging between 17% on the north side of the lot and 22% on the south side of the lot. Standard number two, staff finds that this standard has been met. The staircase and landing is the primary access to the top floor of the structure. Due to the terrain surrounding the house, this is the most logical, practical, and safe location for the stairs and landing. Photos may be found on page 31 of your staff packet showing the steep terrain on the south side of the house. Standard number three, staff finds this standard to be met. The existence of the foundation and location of the garage doors to the driveway, as well as the steep terrain on the south side of the structure dictated the safest location for the staircase and landing. Additionally, the avalanche wedge, which was proposed in the building permit, is to be constructed to the east up slope from the house. Standard number four, staff finds this standard to be met. The applicant owns both Lot 11 and Lot 12. Lot 12 is vacant. In an effort to ensure a 20-foot separation between structures, the owner, Mr. Wagner, has recorded a no-build easement that prevents any building on Lot 12 from being closer than 38.1 feet from the common lot lines of Lot 11 and 12. No fire separation, drainage, runoff, or traffic issues have been identified for this property. Standard number five, staff finds that this standard is met. The requested variance is for a dimensional encroachment and not a use variance. Granting the variance will not change the character of the R-10 district. Standard number six, staff again finds that this standard has been met. Granting this variance will not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the public. Again, no fire separation, drainage, runoff, or traffic issues have been identified. Standard number seven, staff finds this standard to be met. The variance is the minimum variance to allow safe access to the top level of the house. Any conclusion? Staff recommends that since all standards, all seven standards have been met, approval should be granted for the encroachment, subject to the conditions found on pages 13 and 14 of your staff packet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitfield. Are there any questions of staff by the board? Seeing none, could the applicant come forward, please? Could you, hello, could you state and spell your name for the record?
Joel Wagner, J-O-L-E-W-A-G-N-E-R.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. You have 10 minutes for your presentation.
Okay. I've applied for this variance. When I purchased the property in 2001, the basement foundation was already existing on the property. In designing the house, it was brought to my attention by the builder when I had turned in the initial plans that there was no covered entryway. His concern with that, of course, was snow sliding off and possible injuring, harming somebody. So that portion was changed on the house plans after the flat plan had been turned in. It was not, but I know that I'm responsible for it, but it wasn't something that was brought to my attention that it was going to be considered part of the house, and it was going to put me into the setback. So having realized and learned of that afterwards, I was going to list my odds on the market for it, after realizing that this was an issue that needed to be taken care of for lending purposes, and needing to have it taken care of and get everything squared up within this valley as well, turned in this easement. It does encroach 13 feet into the stepback. I do own the lot next door. Per Mary Ratter's recommendation, I legally recorded the stepback to be increased from 25 feet to 38 feet to keep 50 feet of separation between any structures, so that if the lot were sold to another individual, that, you know, if they both are constructed on that lot, that we would keep the separation. Mainly, the whole thing did come about as a safety issue, so that many of us had by snow. The basement foundation already existing there really didn't have much choice as far as moving anything at the time. The lot is, as you can see in the paper, with its, there's a lot of steep slopes. It was probably the best place to put the structure. It's the closest spot on the lot to being out of the avalanche zone. And actually, the initial maps that were drawn by Doug Fessler, it actually showed that the front portion of the house was actually out of the avalanche zone. Having Sue and the associates do another as-built in the map now does- Having Sue and the associates do another as-built, in the map now, it does show that the house is entirely in the avalanche zone. But just due to the topography of the lot, I do think the house was put in the best place that it could be.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Does that conclude your presentation?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions of the applicant by the board? Ms. Williams.
Yes, thank you. I'm wondering, is that the only entrance into the house besides it looks like you also have a garage?
Yeah, no, no, it is not the only entrance. There's a door under the garage that enters into the garage and there is a door on the south side of the half side under the deck. So just on the opposite side of the front entryway.
Mm-hmm.
It is. That goes out onto the deck there. The stairs go, from the deck, the stairs go down to the backyard.
Oh, so it's basically the same setup but on the opposite side?
Yes, except that there's no covered entryway on the deck.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions of the applicant? Mr. Veig.
Mr. Wagner, I assume you've seen the staff packet and the recommendations on the, if we were to approve this variance about agreeing to construct the avalanche mitigation structure within a year?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And you're willing to do that?
Yes, sir. Something that Mary and I had discussed.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Does staff have any question of the applicant? All right, thank you, Mr. Wagner. I feel, thank you for telling me. See if there's anyone from the public wishing to testify? Anyone at all? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Does staff have any rebuttal?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Does the applicant have any rebuttal?
No, sir.
Mr. Wagner's indicated he does not have any rebuttal. With that, the matter rests with the board. Could I have a positive motion, please? Ms. Denny.
In case number two zero one zero dash one one seven, request for fifty-two percent variance from AMC twenty-one point four zero point one one five point F two to allow external staircase and roofed eight foot by eight foot landing greater than thirty inches above grade to encroach thirteen point one feet into the required twenty-five foot setback in the R-ten SL district. Recommend approval subject to department recommendations on pages thirteen and fourteen.
And those are numbers one and four, Ms. Denny? Recommendations, one through four?
One through four, that's correct.
Thank you, Ms. Denny. Mr. Veig, you've indicated you'd second the motion?
That's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Veig. Ms. Denny, would you speak to your motion, please?
I agree with staff in the findings that are substantially met, number one through number seven. That all the standards are substantially met.
Thank you, Ms. Denny. Mr. Veig.
Well, I thought that staff did a very thorough job of explaining the standards and the situation of this particular structure and that the applicant did as well. Certainly, with regard to standard number one, the extraordinary physical circumstances of the avalanche area which this lot is subject to and the difficulty in determining where that actually is located, apparently between the initial construction and final, it was discovered that it was actually in the area. Certainly, safety is a concern for a landing and stairway, so I can appreciate the need to have it a safe way to get out of the house and it's covered. And I think standard number two is substantially met as mentioned by staff. Strict application of those of the code would create an undue hardship. Standard number three, although it was a self-imposed situation, it appears as though the delineation of the avalanche zone did change. And I think that the applicant's dedication of that additional setback easement on the adjacent property is worth noting, as it is in standard number four, that it will, although it does affect, adversely affect the use of adjacent property, it's his property that he's created that dedication for, and I think that anybody seeking to purchase that property in the future would be aware of that additional setback requirement. So I believe that that's substantially met. Standard five, will not change the character of the zoning district. I agree that that's met. And standards six and seven, I believe, are met as well as outlined in the staff packet, so I agree with Ms. Denny and intend to support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Veig. Are there any other comments by board members? Seeing none, please vote. That motion passes by a vote of six to zero. Again, every final decision of the board shall clearly state on its face it is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case and that the parties have thirty days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to the Superior That brings us to our third case of the evening, case two thousand ten one one six. The petitioners are Rodney and Tanya Powell are the petitioners here this evening. They've indicated so. Could staff provide us with the sufficiency of notice, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The property was posted and forty public hearing notices were mailed for this application. We received two public hearing notices back in support of the variance application, one from the next-door neighbor. We received one public hearing notice in opposition to the variance. No comments from the community council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Would you proceed with your staff presentation, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two variances here from the R-ten district. The first variance to allow an existing house to encroach the side yard twenty-five foot setback by approximately two point one feet. The second is to allow an existing eleven by twenty-four square foot satellite TV receiver, tower, and fence enclosure to encroach the side yard twenty-five foot setback by approximately twenty feet. There is an as-built on page three of the package and the plan for construction of the house addition is from two thousand four and that is on page four of the packet. Property is zoned R-ten with special limitations. The special limitation in this case requires a minimum lot size of one and a quarter acres. The lot does comply with that special limitation. Yard setbacks are not affected by the special limitation. The lot is slightly over three acres in size. It is triangle shaped and it is at the end of a cul-de-sac. There's an overall average slope of approximately sixteen to seventeen percent on the property. In two thousand four, the applicant supplied for a permit to add a thirty-two foot by forty foot addition to the original home. The plan submitted, as shown on the plan on page four, does not indicate the dimension of the setback, but with the addition drawn approximately to scale, it appears that the setback shown is approximately thirty-five feet. However, after construction shown on the as-built, the addition is still the same thirty-two by forty feet in size and it is essentially in the same location as was shown on the application, but the building is now only twenty-two point nine feet from the side yard lot line with an encroachment of two point one feet and does not have the original thirty-five foot setback originally anticipated. The house garage addition encroachment of two point one feet does fall within the administrative variance tolerance limit, which is a limit of two point three feet, and this is two point one. However, we cannot work with an administrative variance in this case because the standards of twenty-one, fifteen, oh one two are not met and administrative variances are not available for those persons in the professional trades regularly using Title twenty-one and Mr. and Mrs. Powell are builder contractors. We don't have any information at all on the satellite TV tower structure. It does require a permit due to its size and it does require a variance as it is in the side yard setback. There are two sheds towards the front of the property. They are in legal locations. However, the larger shed at four hundred and eighty square feet requires a permit and we could not find one on file. It is unclear if the smaller shed at approximately two hundred square feet has a permit. There is a permit for a three hundred and sixty square foot shed, but there is no shed of that size on the property that we noted. Regarding the standards, number one, that there exist exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstances, the standard is partially met for the house, which is variance one. The standard is not substantially met for the tower enclosure, which is variance two. The lot was platted the year before the adoption of the R-ten district in this area. The lot is triangle shaped, however neither the plat nor the zoning appear related to the variance need. There is slope to the lot, an average of sixteen to seventeen percent, but the slope does not appear to be related to the variance need either as it is relatively uniform slope across the lot. Also, slope and unusual lot shape are not uncommon in this area. The desire to place the house close to the front and side yards appears to have been a conscious choice of the applicants. The tower is a relatively small footprint and could be moved and placed in a conforming location or the receivers could be placed on the roof of the house or one of the sheds and be in a legal location. Standard two, because of the physical circumstances, strict application would create an exceptional or undue hardship. The standard is again partially met for variance one, not met for variance two. Strict interpretation of the code would require removal of a small corner of the house approximately three square feet on the south corner. This could be considered an undue hardship. The standard, however, is only partially met because standard one is only partially met. For the tower, standard one is not met, the tower could much more easily be complete, excuse me, the tower could much more easily be placed in a conforming location. Standard three, the hardship is not self-imposed. The standard is not met for either variance. Although there is some physical circumstance affecting the property, it's not peculiar to this lot nor does it seem severe enough to justify the variance. For the second part of that standard, the need for the variance does result from the actions of the applicant. Although the applicants did not create the plat nor the slope through the property, they did indicate in their permit application that the addition would be in a legal location before they began construction. New construction is the desire of the applicant and has created the need for the variance. For the tower, the applicants did not obtain a permit and the structure is not shown in the permit application from two thousand four. Regarding standard four, the variance, if granted, will not adversely affect the use of adjacent property. The standard is substantially met for the house, variance one. It is not substantially met for variance two. For variance one, the property is at parity with the neighbors. The house is similar size to those in the neighborhood, no structural or separation issues. Drainage and runoff do not appear to present a problem. The encroachment is not visually obvious. There has only been one objection from the neighborhood. The size of the encroachment would normally fall under an administrative variance. For the tower, variance two, the tower is only five to six feet from the property line and the tower appears to be approximately twenty feet tall. It does pose a potential safety issue in that if it were to fall or be blown over, it could land on the neighbor's property. That neighbor is one of the letters of no objection to the requested variance. Standard five, the variance, if granted, is in keeping with the intent of the code. The standard is substantially met for both variances. The requests are dimensional. Standard six, the variance, if granted, does not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the municipality. The standard is substantially met as in standard four, no identified area-wide health or safety issues. And standard seven, the variance, granted, is a minimum variance to make possible a reasonable use of the land. The standard is met for the house, variance one. The standard is not met for variance two. For the house, the encroachment is relatively small. It is only three square feet in size and under other circumstances, it might have qualified for an administrative variance. For the tower, the tower appears that it could have been easily placed within a relatively conforming location and it had been shown on the two thousand four permit application, the setback would have been indicated. A reasonable use of the property does exist without the twenty-foot tower, excuse me. For both structures, standard three is not substantially met. For the tower, standards one, two, four, and seven are not met as well. Therefore, the department has to recommend denial. There are conditions on pages twelve and thirteen should the board find for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Are there any questions of staff by the board? Seeing none, could the applicant come forward, please? Could you state and spell your name for the record?
My name is Rodney Powell, R-O-D-N-E-Y-P-O-W-E-L-L.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. You have ten minutes for your presentation and as I've stated earlier, we must find that all seven standards are met, so if you can address the seven standards, please.
I don't know about the seven standards, but I'll address what I know about. I haven't heard anything about a satellite dish problem at all until just now. I took the satellite dish guy up and over from my house and he said I'd have to have a twenty-foot tower on top of my house in order to get reception because the lot goes uphill and there's trees that are fifty to seventy foot tall on, so that wasn't an option on top of the house. I hired a satellite dish guy and he said if I put it in the location where it is and went up ten feet, I could get reception. That failed, so I fired him and I got another satellite guy. He told me if I went up fifteen feet, it would work and it didn't work, so I fired him and got a third guy. And he told me if I went up twenty feet, it would work, and so I did and it barely worked. Sometimes it goes in and out. So that is the only location on that lot to have a satellite dish. As far as the part about me being a builder, I was a fiver for the first nineteen years that I was here and I've only been doing building of homes actually for three years. I've only got four houses and they're all on the terraces with five-foot setbacks and I don't know anything about land use areas. The reason why the house is where it is is I couldn't push it back any farther because I'd already spent twelve thousand dollars on the driveway. Now, the ten feet you go back is costing me another couple thousand dollars for gravel. The tower cost me ten thousand dollars. I paid the renter to come back three times and keep extending the height and because of the support was so ugly, I spent five thousand dollars to put a fence around it to make it look a little better. I think the original survey was off a few feet and I think that's why the encroachment of the house happened in the, it's about, it's a triangle about this size that's in the setback area. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
You had mentioned this was the first that you'd heard about the satellite tower. Have you seen the case file that we're looking at?
I just now read it.
Okay. Okay, just so you know, we were acting on the two variances before us and it's up to you as the petitioner to provide us with the necessary information to act on these cases, on this case and on these two variances. these cases, on this case and on these two variances.
Okay, what information do you need?
That's up to you to determine what's necessary, but we have seven standards that we refine that have to be met, and our seven standards have to be met for a variance to be granted.
You sent me this information with the things on it, and I sent it back with half of them I do not understand well enough to answer. So if you want to clarify your questions so that I can understand them, I'd be happy to answer them.
It's not up to us to clarify it. It's up to you to answer the questions, and we did not send that letter. You applied for a variance, I believe, correct? How did this case come before us this evening?
We applied for one variance, and that's all I know about. And they sent me a packet and asked these questions, and I couldn't answer all of them.
And the burden rests with the applicant to address these standards. Did you talk to staff as far as how to answer the questions?
Did you? This is Tanny Pow.
Yeah, can you state and spell your name, please?
My name is Tanny Pow. I did T-A-N-I-P-O-W-E-L-L. The only information I heard of was from Mr. Burmire, and it was for the variance of the two-point whatever. That was the only thing that was ever brought up. When I came, I had to get this packet, I spoke to Mr. Burmire, and he never said anything about the antenna or the sheds, just the smaller portion in the back of the house. So we were not informed until we just walked in here about the other things. The satellite dish, we are never found on. It's been up for ten years, and it is driven with piling, and we can show you the receipts. It is never found on.
And I was wondering, I was wondering how the second variance was applied for if we never applied. Why is there a second variance, right?
Right.
Wouldn't we have to apply for a second variance?
Because we didn't know.
Mr. Barrett, could you, how is the second variance request identified?
Mr. Chairman, one of the reasons for requiring a current ASBelt to be submitted with any variance application is that we circulate these things to about fifteen other departments, and any code violations that are noted will be called out and added to the application. It's not an additional fee. There's nothing any extra about it. It's very similar to the first case where the carport was the question, but after a site visit, it was then noted that the driveways were at issue. It's not an uncommon thing. And in the notification to applicants, in the letter that we send out notifying them of the official hearing date, we do state in the letter that the department report will be available approximately a week before the meeting, and that they should avail themselves of the opportunity to get it and take a look at it. It's also something that's generally mentioned during an initial briefing when someone comes in to inquire about a variance. We go through the process, the procedure, highlight the seven questions, and explain what the process is going to be like.
Can we do that, Vincent, on the satellite dish?
It seems like if you charged me six hundred dollars to send these out to my neighbors, then you could have spent a forty-four cent stamp to tell me I have another issue so I could bring information for you.
Well, it sounds like there's two issues then. One, I guess my first comment is, how did you come to apply for the first variance then? Not the satellite, but...
Mr. Burmire.
So it was identified that you may have not have an encroachment into a...
Been found.
I guess I would defer to the board, but perhaps then there needs to be a postponement of this case while you address the comments raised in the second variance, because we are not here to make your case for you. That burden rests with you. However, if you haven't, if this is the first you have heard, that you need to provide the necessary documentation for the satellite variance, I'm sorry, the encroachment for the satellite, then perhaps that may need to... Mr. Barrett, wait a minute, wait a minute, please, Ms. Powell. Mr. Barrett.
Mr. Chairman, go ahead and finish and let Mrs. Powell finish. I was just going to remark about her comment on the forty-four cent stamp, but go ahead and finish, please.
Okay. Ms. Powell, you want to make a comment?
It's got me now.
There is no other issue with the satellite dish. There's no more information to bring in. There's no reason to postpone this. The only thing, the only thing is that that is the only location on our lot you can have a satellite dish. I fired two guys, so.
Okay, so in your mind, there'd be no benefit to postponing the case to provide us with additional information then?
I don't know what other information I can provide, other than that's the only location. I took the guy up on the roof of my house, and he said it ran a chance.
Okay.
And the roof of the sheds.
And the roof of the sheds, too, and he said, no way. I actually went over to the lot up here from me and cut the tops off some of the trees on another lot, just so I could get it to work at the height it's at now.
Thank you. Mr. Barrett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On September eighth, the certified letter was mailed to Mr. and Mrs. Powell, and it's the standard letter. It says the department's recommendation will be available at the planning department offices on the Friday prior to the meeting, and we advise applicants to come in, get that, read it, read the department's interpretation of the seven standards, and that's where all and any other issues would be pointed out.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Mr. Powell, I believe you concluded your presentation then?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. Are there any questions of the applicant by the board? Ms. Croft?
Yes, Mr. Powell, when discussing the satellite, satellite dish, you said that the location's in the tallest, the highest part of the site. Is that correct?
No, it's not the highest part of the site. It's just the only location because of the trees on the uphill side on another lot.
Okay, so that, if you look, then, we have a topography overlaid on an aerial here, so if, so if you moved, if the satellite were, tried to do that on the west side of the lot where you have a similar elevation, you know, the satellite looks to be at about elevation sixteen or twelve sixty-four or twelve sixty-six. The other side of the lot is the same height, but it's the condition of the exist of the lot just to the south of that, that it's too, it's taller.
Trees are way too tall. All of my lot except for the very, right up against the edge where it is, that's the only location.
Because generally the ground is falling, is going down to the east of your property then, so that's...
It's going down to the north of our property.
Right, okay.
But the trees are so tall on the south side everywhere except for that one area right where it is, that's the only location I can get a satellite dish.
Okay, and when the dish was put up, I mean, it's a pretty tall structure, and you said it's piling. Was there engineering done on the tower?
My, my piling driver does his own engineering. His name's Jim Brown with the muni. They may know about it. He drives pilings all the time with no inspections. He does his own inspections. He has a deal with the municipality to do that. I can't bring that information.
Well, that's, I was just wondering if that, because if this was built without a permit, and there's concern about structural stability of a structure, I think that one of the things...
You should see it. It's not going anywhere.
That one of the conditions of that variance might be a requirement that the engineering on the structure be provided and reviewed by the city.
There would be actually no in engineering because he does his own inspections. He knows what to do. He has a deal with the muni. He drives pilings all the time for the muni. There are no inspections. He does his own engineering. I would size the pipe on a deck or something, and the muni would approve it. So it would only take a muni approval of that, but he doesn't need a muni approval of anything, as far as I know. He never has. They don't come and inspect his pilings.
Right, but do you understand my point, though, is that if we made that a condition, then that would be...
If you make it a condition, right, I could get that done for you.
Okay, that's, I'm just saying, is that that might be a reasonable thing of, you're saying it's not going to fall down, but it's hard for me to take your word on it. It looks like a strong structure, but I don't know how far down it is or what the conditions are of that ground to be able to allow it to stay.
It's good with a hard ground, and it would take a good-sized boulder to push it over.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Are there any other questions of the applicant by the board? Excuse me, seeing no one, I think we're going to have a very short public hearing since it doesn't appear anyone else is here. Mr. Powell, you want to step aside for a sec while we have a public hearing? Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify, Ms. Powell?
If I may, I'd like to apologize, Mr. Barrett. I did not read all of that when I sent it to you.
Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify? Seeing and hearing no one, public hearing is closed. Mr. Barrett, do you have any rebuttal?
Couple of quick comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pilings in and of themselves, Mr. Powell is correct, they do not require an inspection. But as a general rule of thumb, anything over eight feet tall does require at least a structural inspection. In regard to the location of the satellite tower, I am hardly a satellite tower engineer, but if you interpolate, this is a question for the board as well as for Mr. Powell, if you interpolate between the ASBelt on page three and some of the photographs, the satellite dishes and structure appear to be somewhat in alignment with the shed, the larger shed. So I think my question would be, could not the satellite tower have been placed where the large shed is or placed on the roof of the large shed, both of which would be legal locations?
Is that a question for me?
Mr. Powell, you'll be able to address that in your rebuttal here. Did you have anything further, Mr. Barrett?
No, thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Mr. Powell, would you come forward, please, and do you have any rebuttal in addition to addressing Mr. Barrett's question?
That dish is a little bit to the west, I mean, that shed is a little bit to the west of where I need to be to clear the trees on the uphill side of the lot. And if I did put it on top of the shed, it would take a substantial tower on top of the shed, which would look really unsightly. I wanted to get it back away from the road a little.
Mr. Powell, I don't follow your line of reasoning. I'm looking on, do you have the staff packet?
Yes, I've seen the...
You have, page sixteen has the aerial, the aerial and the topography.
My wife just informed me, I forgot the shed was not there at the time the tower was built either, so...
Well, that's okay. I think we can infer, looking at the ASBelt on page three and then the aerial, isn't the shed at a higher elevation than your satellite tower?
The overall height, I don't think, is. The shed is not...
The ground elevation.
The ground elevation is higher. The shed is not higher than the tower.
Sure, but, but I believe Mr. Barrett's comment was, and I, Mr. Barrett, is that where you were going with your comment as far as you putting the satellite tower at the shed location?
Yes, sir, that would be one option. It's very difficult to get a three-dimensional feel, but if you look at the photograph on page twenty-one, it does appear to reflect exactly what you were saying. The shed is currently higher than the satellite dish. So I think I follow you, that it doesn't appear that it would have needed additional elevation at the shed location, if that's where you were going.
I wanted to make sure that Mr. Powell's response was, Mr. Powell, you had indicated you were responding to Mr. Barrett. I'm not trying to put any words in anyone's mouths. You had mentioned that you're, you could not put the satellite tower on the shed because you needed to be further...
It would have to be higher because of the trees on the lot, too. The trees stop, you have a shed, a tower, and the trees stop between the shed and the tower on the uphill side.
Okay.
So if I move it back to where the shed is, I'm going to have to cut some of the trees off on another lot I don't own, which I don't think they're going to allow.
Okay.
I've had three guys out there trying to do this, and I was surprised at how poor quality two of them are.
Thank you. Do you have any further rebuttal, Mr. Powell?
No.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Croft, had you indicated, I thought you had commented, shown up and then gone away, and it's gone away? We've had a rebuttal with that. The matter rests with the board, because I, could I have a positive motion in this
Yes, I would like to split the request, please. In, first, I would like, in the case number two thousand and ten, one-one-six, move that we grant a variance from AMC twenty-one point forty point one-one-five to allow an existing home, except, home to remain in the yard setbacks in the R-ten district, to allow an existing house addition to encroach the sideyard twenty-five foot setback by two-point-one feet, a setback of twenty-two point nine feet. Subject to conditions, I believe it's one, two, three, and seven, with one being modified to read, I believe that the three words "and other structures" would be struck from it. So it's an approved variance to allow an existing house to encroach the sideyard setbacks. So yes, one, two, three, seven.
Would seven still be necessary?
I don't know.
Okay.
Uh, no.
So one, two, and three?
Yes.
On page twelve?
On page twelve.
Thank you, Ms. Croft. Mr. Vig, you've indicated you seconded that motion?
That's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Ms. Croft?
Yes, I'm getting there. Just start by saying I do believe that this is, in general, a de minimis encroachment, and as staff packet indicates, that this is, could be granted, a administrative variance, except that the applicants are builders, contractors, and I believe that Mr. Powell did indicate that that is not extensive experience, and given the fact that it's only a three, three-square-foot encroachment, I believe that it should be granted because it is so small and is de minimis. We have, we've granted those many times in the past. In terms of the standards themselves, I do believe that, I agree with staff, that on, for this variance, the standard is at least partially met. The, so the lot was platted before the adoption of the R-ten district, and the, let me see. And so, as I said, I agree with staff on that one. In terms of standard two, I agree with staff that, again, this standard is at least partially, partially met here. Again, for both, we have a sloping lot and putting the house towards... Again, for both, we have a sloping lot, and putting the house towards the front of the lot does make, does make sense. In terms of staff, of standard number three, the hardship is not self-imposed. I guess I'm having a little trouble with that. The applicant did state that there might have been a problem with the surveying. I do believe that if you look at that, the application in 2004, that, the building application, you could scale it off, but you can see that it wasn't drawn to scale, just because it doesn't, doesn't look like the right proportion, especially when you compare it to the ASBelt, which is of the correct, the correct size, and is the same size as shown on that ASBelt. So I guess I'd be interested in other people's opinions on standard three. In terms of standard four, I agree with staff that the standard is substantially met, that it's not adversely affecting the use of adjacent property, because this is an unusually shaped lot, that this is a side yard setback, but we're down, downhill, as it was from the adjacent property, substantially downhill. In terms of standard five, this variance is in keeping with the intent of the code and will not change the character of the zoning district. So standard five is met, standard six is also met, and it doesn't adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare. And standard seven, I do believe that it is met. This is only three square feet, and could have been dealt with in any other case, or most other cases, with administrative variance. So I guess I'm inclined to support, to support this variance.
Thank you, Ms. Croft. Mr. Vig?
I agree with Ms. Croft on her findings on standard one, that I believe it is substantially met, and as well as standard two. And I do think that with standard three, although it was self-imposed, the fact that it would otherwise qualify for an administrative variance, to me, is worth considering, and I, I'm glad that the applicant brought up his, I guess, relatively limited experience in the building trade. I think that is a factor, and so I would, I would tend to view his, his experience as such that it would qualify for an administrative variance, and I think, under the context of standard number three, that it's a, it's a very small encroachment. And standard number four, I do believe that it would not adversely affect the use of adjacent property, so I believe that that's substantially met. As well as five, will not change the character of the zoning district. Standard six, I agree that that is substantially met as well. There's no identified area-wide health or safety issues. And standard seven, I do believe that it is essentially the minimum variance that would make possible a reasonable use of the land, so I would concur that that is, I believe it's substantially met. It's very minor, and the square footage intrusion is pretty small. And so, I agree.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Are there other comments by board members? I also intend to support the motion, and leading, lending weight to my finding that standard three is met. I note that the addition was constructed in generally, on generally the same elevation topographically as the house, the existing house. So for the reasons identified by Ms. Croft and Mr. Vig, I intend to support the motion as well. If there are no other comments, please vote. That motion passes by a vote of six to zero. Ms. Croft?
Okay, here we go again. In case number 2010-116, I move that we grant a variance from AMC 21.40.115 to allow an existing accessory structure to remain in the yard setbacks in the R10 district, to allow an existing 11-by-24-square-foot satellite TV receiver, tower, and fence enclosure to encroach the side yard 25-feet, 25-foot setback by 20-feet, setback of 5-feet. Subject to conditions, one, two, four, and five, with condition one being modified to read at the beginning, approved variance to allow an existing accessory structure, otherwise unchanged.
Where'd you get that? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Croft. Mr. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Ron, you've indicated, you will second that? That's correct. Thank you, Mr. Ron. Got a curveball there. Ms. Croft?
I'm flipping pages again. I find this, this variance a little more difficult to deal with than the first one. Based on the information in staff packet, I was initially inclined to not support this However, the petitioner has brought additional information on it, and so my mind has been slowly changing on that. Regarding standard number one, about exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstances, this is a, as staff noted, this is a sloping lot, and it is regularly sloping, even though it is sloping dramatically. One condition that was not discussed in here, though, is, is the height of trees surrounding properties and the ability to get some sort of clear airspace to get reception. And so I do think that, at least for this particular use, this is an unusual lot, or an unusual location, because most of the problems seem to be the trees on adjoining properties, not just the location of this particular property. And then, because of that, standard two, the petitioner has, has commented on how it has been difficult to get reception there, and had to do it three different times, continuing to go up to try and find, get the reception. So I think that, I think standard two is also met. In terms of standard three not being self-imposed, again, we'd like to see building permits and inspections and everything done in a timely manner. It does seem as if the petitioner did try and, try and find locations that worked, because I'm sure they really didn't want to build a 20-foot tower, especially over three different tries. So I think that three might be partially, partially met. Standard number four is the one that, about the variance will not adversely affect the use of adjacent property. We do have comments back from the most affected property owner on the adjacent property, and they have not, it does not have any objection to this particular thing. I do believe that if we are to allow it to remain there, we really do need to make sure that it is structurally safe, and one of the conditions of this was, condition number four, no, condition number five, did have to do with inspections and getting this properly permitted. So that would alleviate some of my concerns on standard number four. In terms of standard number five, staff has indicated, I agree, this, the standard is substantially met. And standard number six, again, standard is substantially met. Standard number seven, about it being the minimum variance that would make possible a reasonable use of the land, there might be another location on the property there, or where it could be shorter or smaller. I think that's, I have some questions on, on standard number seven.
Thank you, Ms. Croft. Mr. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Ms. Croft. I do not intend to support the motion. I have some question about the premise and finding that standards one and two are at least partially met. We've heard discussion. I, of course, am not a satellite dish expert, but the petitioner has shown that building a taller tower has resolved some earlier problems, so perhaps relocating and building a taller tower may alleviate those problems. So in terms of there only being a single conforming location on this lot, I'm not certain that is necessarily the case. Regarding standard four, that's a concern of mine as well. Yes, I note that the current property owner, most potentially affected, has stated no objection, but that's the current property owner. Future use of the adjoining property is just as affected as current use of the property is, and have questions about the potential adverse effects from the tower in its current location. Regarding standard number seven, this is also a problem area for me. The function that this accessory structure provides is just that, an accessory above and beyond what meets my definition, in this case, of a reasonable use of the land, and find that standard number seven is not met. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Ron. Ms. Denny?
I agree with Mr. Ron and with staff, in that the tower could be placed in a conforming location, and I also do not intend to support this variance.
Thank you, Ms. Denny. Are there any other comments from any of the board?
I also do not intend to support the motion for the same reasons identified by Mr. Ron and Ms. Denny, and I do find that if the petitioner had come in for a building permit, that as staff had indicated, the setbacks could have been indicated at that time, and another location could have possibly been found. Are there any other comments? If not, please vote. That motion fails by a vote of one, two, five. Again, for the record, every final decision of the board shall clearly state on its face, it is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case, and that the parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to the Superior Court. With that, that is our last case of the evening. That brings us to reports. I have nothing to report, I guess, except we're, we're at seven. Mr. Burkhart say maybe for eight for some time? Do we have any ideas on a ninth? Board member?
Mr. Chairman, that's correct about Mr. Burkhart. He's volunteered to stay through December, possibly January, and there is someone in his office. He has approached. We've not heard from her. Mr. Ron, I believe, has indicated a willingness to be reappointed. Ms. Croft was a no, unfortunately, for being reappointed. We've received a list of names from the mayor's office, but it was just a list of names for all boards and commissions. They didn't tell us who they were anticipating for any particular position. So I'm afraid for spot number nine, we're still vacant, and we're still unknown.
And Ms. Croft, as to this evening, Ms. Croft's last meeting?
I'm sorry, Ms. Croft told me earlier she's willing to stay to November 18th if she clears it with her telephone.
With her what?
Telephone.
With her telephone?
Because it's the 18th, it's not the usual second Thursday.
Correct. November 11th, the second Thursday, is Veterans Day. It's a holiday, so the meeting will be November 18th.
I was available on Veterans Day. I don't know, I may be out of town the next week, so I need to...
Understood.
My phone doesn't know.
Understood. Your brains?
I usually, no, I got to call a client.
Okay.
Phone a friend, actually.
Are there any, I guess, does our secretary or any committees have any comments? I guess, again, just anything we can do to get additional members would be helpful. Mr. Ron?
Mr. Chair, if we could quickly, I noticed perhaps for the first time in our staff packets, the addition of a department recommendation, which I think is interesting and useful, but doesn't appear to fit where it's been located, and those were the last few recommendations, using the last case as an example, in that staff recommends a condition based on denial of the variance, when, as Berman or Croft pointed out early in the evening, that if we deny the variance, then none of the recommendations for approval would apply regardless. So don't think that they're properly located in department recommendations, but was happy to see them nonetheless, and was wondering if there's another location, either within the staff packet or the variance request application, that that subject can be addressed. The issue of removal or ramifications of denial of variance request.
Mr. Barrett?
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vig, thanks for bringing that up. This is something that we used to do. Code enforcement and code abatement have asked, and I'll investigate this further, it won't be settled until we get another chance to discuss it, but code enforcement and code abatement have asked that it be in the conditions, because it's easier for them to enforce, and it carries more weight if it should go to an appeal. But I will investigate if it could not be somewhere else within the report, or, well, at least brought up verbally, but it should be in writing somewhere in the report. We'll look into it.
Yeah, but if it's, if we're denying the variance, how can that condition have, have any weight, then?
Because at no point can we move to adopt it.
All right, I see what you mean. Take it up with code enforcement and code abatement.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think it is a good idea to, just, you know, just so, again, we hear, we're providing adequate notice to the applicants, if they have issues, perhaps, but I don't know that we have any weight if a variance is granted.
That's true. It could be pointed out as a caution to the applicant, and then if it is denied, and a board member places it in the findings, it'll show up in the resolution, and that's enough of an enforcement mechanism. That might work.
Mr. Vig, you've indicated you have a comment?
I have a question for, for Mr. Barrett about if we know people who might be someone to approach about serving, could you, are there general rules of thumb you like to see as far as, you know, one-third attorneys and one-third architects and one-third engineers, or is it anything like, any rule of thumb?
Rule of thumb, Mr. Vig? No objection to several attorneys. It's often a real help in dealing with the legal niceties of variances, but certainly someone, well, such as any of you from various trades, the construction industry, surveyors, architects, a well-rounded mix, in the time I've been here, seems to work best.
We don't have a surveyor right now, do we?
No, we don't. But under the point of breathing is kind of up my criteria. I know we'll go from there. Mr. Barrett, did you have any other comments?
No, sir, thank you. No, sir, thank you.
I, I'd just like to follow up, and, Ms. Croft, I anticipated you are here, but in November, but I, I'd just like to say, we're a small board, and I appreciate the diligence that everybody gives these cases. They aren't easy, and I think, in spite of our size, we do a very good job of, of addressing the, the difficult cases. So I'm extremely frustrated that the numbers are so small, and we have to carry, you all have to carry the water as much as you do, but I think you all do a very good job.
Mr. Barrett, do we know if there are any major sporting events on November 18th?
Well, it's getting close to Thanksgiving. I'm sure there are going to be college football games all over the place.
That's right. Well, we might need to block Mr. Burkhart's TV reception.
It's unfortunate that we can't threaten him with, you know, kicking him off the board or anything to get him here.
That would just drive him away sooner.
Are there any other comments? And, Mr. Barrett--
How many cases are we looking at for November?
Currently, for November 18th, we have one, but it's fairly complicated. It's actually three variances, fence height, landscaping, and parking standards. It's associated with a conditional use application. The applicant needs to get these variances addressed. So one case, maybe an hour, hour and a half to cover the three issues in it.
Well, Mr. Croft has already proven that can be done with three cases.
I'm glad we have our sense of humor. With that, we are adjourned.